I'd like to call the meeting to order. First up is approval of meeting minutes for August 25, 2022, and October 27, 2022. We didn't meet in September.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August 25, 2022, and October 27, 2022.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. I think we're starting to the administrative first and then the executive? Or the executive first? What is this? Okay, I'm going to start with the administrative actions. I have a letter here requesting that Jessica DeBia from 19 Kent Street, special permit and variance be extended to next month.
I'd like to make a motion to extend Jessica DeBia, 19 Kent Street, to continue that to the next hearing.
For variance and extension. She wants an extension.
It's another year.
Another year?
Mm-hmm.
They're good for a year.
Yeah, it's a year.
Anybody here for me?
Is there anybody here for that? Oh, perfect. Come on up. Name and address for the board, please.
My name is Jessica DeBia. I live at 19 Kent Street.
Hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Can you talk about what you're requesting, please?
So, we're requesting an extension for the special permit and variance. It took quite a bit of time to actually find a contractor to work with and call us back. So, we finally got one. We're working with one now and just trying to finalize budget and plan. We had some hiccups with our original proposed plan from our architect. So, now with all the updates and waiting to hear back from them, it seems like we're hopefully on the road to get ready.
Great. Thank you.
And then I do have an updated plan. We decided not to move the garage forward so we wouldn't lose driveway space. I don't know if you guys wanted it. Everything else should be the same.
Think where you're going to change it. I would just come back and submit it.
Okay.
That way, it's on file.
Okay. So, will we apply for the building permit?
You don't have to reapply, no.
Oh, okay.
Just add it.
So, you had, on your original decision, you had a variance?
Yeah, the variance was from the front and the side. So, that will stay the same. The only thing that we're changing is not bringing the garage forward to the driveway. We're keeping it where it is so we wouldn't lose driveway space. Because we were trying to connect the garage forward into a mudroom. But we figured that's literally going to have taken half of our driveway. So, we're going to keep the garage and then just push the house back like we had talked about and then connect it that side.
And you have not filed for a building permit yet, right?
No, not with the contractor, no. Well, we got denied originally, and that's how we found out we had the variance issue.
So, right now, you don't have a building permit?
I don't think so, no. They had said that we needed to request an extension since we're up. Ours, I think, expires December 16.
Right, but now you're changing it.
Yeah.
So, you may have to...
Yeah, I'm okay with an extension. When you want to file, you'll have to put...
Yeah, put that paperwork with it.
Because you were denied a building permit. That's what happened here.
Mm-hmm.
And then you didn't have a contractor, so you never went back for a building permit. So, you're kind of in the middle now.
Okay. So, the next step is to get a building permit or...
What?
Your contractor.
Your contractor.
Oh, okay. Because that's what I thought was here. Okay.
Okay.
Just make sure that he's aware that those plans aren't the ones you submitted originally.
Yeah, he knows that, yeah. So, we just got this updated at the end of August.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion? To extend this?
I think it was you, Rob, and Mike that approved the original variance.
I'll make the motion.
Three of you extend the permit.
How do you know that?
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I guess it was. That's fake. There is a different...
Yeah, it was a motion to extend it.
How long did we extend it for?
A year.
A year.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we are going to call an executive session out of order, out of our normal agenda. And I'm going to request that there's no recording at this time and it be placed on hold at that while we're doing our executive summary. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the meeting back in session. I'm very sorry for the interruption. Next up to order is our continued hearings. We are going to go with David Plunkett on behalf of Claudio Pereira for a variance under section 5.3.2 and 5.3.1. E3 of Toots Berry zoning bylaw for a front yard setback to construct a 24-by-18 detached garage, 20-by-20 enclosed gazebo, and install a 20-by-18 in-ground pool as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 20 South Rota Street, Assassin's Snap 70, Lot 174, Zoned Residential. And this one was continued from 10/27/22. That was a month ago, everyone. That was a month ago.
I'm not sure I don't know if you want me to put...
Yeah, please. Thank you. Name and address for the board, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. For the record, David Plunkett, representing the applicant here tonight regarding the request for the variance as you recited. At the last meeting, we did a fairly, you know, I think, comprehensive review of the site and what we were looking to do. And the extension was for the purpose of board members to personally view the site. So, I think maybe I might just leave it that, you know, we're here to answer any questions you have as a result of the site view.
So, the voting members are Dan, Rob, and Mike tonight. Just so that we're all clear on who's voting. We actually have the paperwork today, too, so that helps as well. And I need to ask the board, have you three walked?
I have walked them.
The premises, yes?
Yep.
Do you gentlemen have any questions?
Do we have to have the gazebo or the pool? I wasn't happy with how close that garage is going to be to the street. I think it's a lot for that, that small lot. You have a garage, a gazebo, and an in-ground pool?
The plan as presented would be what they would hope to do to the backyard for the benefit of the family. But certainly, you know, understand the nature of, you know, what we're trying to do here tonight is, you know, if we're at an absolute dead end, we could certainly just...
Just to make sure I was fresh in mind. Looked at it.
I have a question. The chair, I was wondering how many buildings you're going to have off once you finish the plan with the garage and the pool and total on the property.
I mean, it would be what you saw when you went to the site view, other than the removal of a shed that's to the right of the carport that currently exists there now.
Because it's on the inside, on the outside of the fence, as I recall. On the outside of the fence, as I recall.
So, that would be removed and taken off of the site.
The carport. And I thought I heard last month that you were also going to remove the current shed that's there, too.
Yes.
Are you removing it fully or are you replacing it? Putting it somewhere else in your property?
No, no. Gone, completely. We're talking about this...
The little one.
Yeah.
Right near the carport.
Yeah. The only thing that will be on that whole row will be one of the garage, pool, and gazebo.
Can I get your name and address of the board as well, please?
Claudio Pereira, 20 South Rota.
Thank you. Thank you. That was my only question, was relocating with the shed. Dan, do you have questions?
No, I just wanted to ask any neighbors or butters here.
Yes, one.
And if I remember correctly, he spoke last month as well, so...
I do have a quick question.
Okay.
As I look at the pool here, as far as the, I don't know if that's east or west side, but anyways, as you're looking at the building to the right, how far is that from the fence?
From the back deck, yeah. That looks like, well, that's cool.
So, yes, so off of the, so the back deck, that's...
Turn the purple, yeah.
Probably 10 feet. No, actually, well, it wouldn't be anymore.
You've seen the letter from the town that's in our packet, right? The one that's stating, it has three items, but the third one states that there's still a gap in title from Edith Drive. The town is still considering Edith Drive a paper street.
I had email correspondence with the building commissioner when this first started, and I do have the email when I spoke to him. Is this the, this was an email that I had from Mr. Burdenasi on May 4, and he said that unless we had a determination of dissolution by the court, that he would still have to address it that same way in terms of his calculation. But the option then would be to seek a variance. And, you know, as I mentioned the last time, you know, I'm not going to, you know, challenge his decision to say, hey, get me a decision in the court. Or I'm still saying the plan that created this lot, which is up there right now that shows this Edith Drive, you know, that created that lot. But as we showed last time, that was 1954, 1961, I think, or '66 is when, '61, that the town actually endorsed that plan that allowed the developer to utilize it.
So, ultimately, it's either a paper street or your neighbor's property.
Correct.
One of the other. Either way, it's not yours.
Right. Yeah, we don't dispute that it's not our land.
So, you're looking at, you're looking at a 25-foot setback or a 15-foot setback, right?
Correct. And in our position would be that...
And we're at five?
Six for the...
Six.
For the pool and five for the garage.
What is it for the gazebo?
The gazebo was six as well. And, you know, in our position was that the, really, the only way to really look at this is to look at the title of our next-door neighbor who has deeds in which he has been conveyed title. And respecting the building commissioner's stand to say, he's looking at the original plan from 1954, we're saying, well, we would have to, I think, only, the only reasonable way to look at that land is it belongs to the next-door neighbor because the town approved that, excuse me, the town approved the plan that created this lot and the developer that submitted that plan that was approved in 1960s then conveyed to him that remaining portion of Edith Drive that wasn't incorporated into the 1966 subdivision plan, or '61, whether, I'm sorry if I'm missing the dates, but you, whatever the date is, it's either '60 or '61, or '66 or '61.
So, also, if you're familiar with this letter, point number two that the town's bringing up, the plot plan accompanied by the application does not show a date. However, the building commissioner's refusal letter indicates a plot plan dated 12/21/21. According to the Zoning Board of Appeals' application packet, the plot plan must be dated within six months.
I never received, was that supposed to have been sent to me?
It was in your packet. You didn't have this?
No.
We got more.
Mm-hmm. Do you have yours?
I have, yeah.
Could I have that, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
It seems like this was denied quite some time ago, almost a year ago now, right?
The denial letter was, I believe, May...
Yes. That was 10/6. The commissioner's date is April.
Basically, the denial letter said that it was denied unless there was a grant of a variance. So, that was the course of action that was followed to get the request of variance, which was...
Yep, that's it.
So, April of 2022 was the denial letter. And that, that reference indicated that we had to get a variance. In reference, section 4130, which was the applicable bylaw in effect at that time, and when we filed, we made reference to 4130 as spelt out in the April 24th letter, and also referenced current sections 5.3.2 and 5.3.1, point E, point three. And that was, I had the opportunity to talk to Mr. Berdanasi at the time that we were filing, and he said, okay, that's fine, as long as we reference what he referenced in his letter, and then reference the new section in the, in the bylaws that were adopted in the, at the May town meeting. I mean, regarding the plot plan, he makes reference to the, the plot plan dated December 24, 2021. Mike, the applicant is here today, and he can certainly testify that there has been no change to the footprint of any building or structure on the site, which would be the issue relative to the date of the, the plot plan. So that in and of itself would not be any material issue unless he were unable to say, oh, yeah, I got that in '21, but I've also done multiple changes since then. So if you want for the record, I can have the applicant place on the record that the structure is shown as existing at the time of the application, that there has been no change since that time.
That'd make me happy if you'd say that.
Yeah, so just as a matter of a question to Claudio, Mr. Pereira, if, can you please for the record testify in that this is a public hearing that basically anything said here is to be deemed under oath, that those structures and the layout of structures as existing on that plot plan are still representative of the footprints of any building on the lot as they exist today?
Yes, they are.
What, on your gazebo?
Yes.
Do you have any pictures of that? Is it any more in-depth pictures? Does it have a foundation? Is it sitting on block? Is it in our packet?
Yes. Exhibit B to the submittal was the gazebo.
It shows me the gazebo. You're going to build it like this, sitting on piles, or does it have a foundation?
No, it was going to be on sonotubes, which I.
That shows the sonotubes.
Yeah.
So the first page in exhibit B, that showed the framing elevations and shows the sonotubes that they will be resting upon. Those are the sonotubes.
Yeah.
So it would be the bottom, oh, actually, the two-thirds bottom of the, what's referred, which is shown as SK1, proposed gazebo framing.
Yeah, SK1 just happens to have the sonotubes in there. Right, this is just, you're buying this, this gazebo?
No, I'll be.
You're building it? All right, the pool's an in-ground pool, right?
Yes.
How deep?
The deepest part will be eight, I mean, nine feet, sorry.
Nine feet? And the garage is a full foundation, right?
Yes.
I have no more questions at this time.
Okay, need somebody to make a motion?
Hold them back up to the audience if you just want to say something.
Does anybody want to speak on behalf of Mr. Pereira? Go up to the podium, please, name and address.
Joseph P. Maria, 3 East South Road, Street.
Have you determined what the setback is going to be for the garage from the street?
On his print, it is 19 feet, is what he's asking for.
It's, it's.
Now, when he parks a vehicle in front of his garage, it's going to be on town property.
Not if it's under 19 feet.
Well, my car is 20 feet. He has a truck that's going to be 22 feet.
Did you measure your truck?
No, I did not.
It still hasn't been determined.
He didn't happen to take a measurement, attorney blanket, from the, looking from the street, from the right-hand corner of the garage to that curved property line?
So we just have the 19 feet, so, so that to that curve is 19, that would be the. Then, Cheryl, would it be possible for us to just have, based on some of the questions that are coming forward before there be any clause of testimony, would it be possible to give us five minutes to just discuss a couple of things in private and then come back to you?
Sure. I don't have a problem with that.
Sure.
Do you guys, do you want to put this one on hold?
Why don't we, why don't we table him and take the next question?
Yeah, we can table this, and then we can come back.
All right.
All right, so at this time, we're going to put this hearing on hold and, and move forward with the next.
He'd like to talk to his client for a little while, so we're going to let him, he'd like to speak to his client, so we're going to let him do that, and then we'll come back to it before we make any determinations.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to table.
A second.
All right.
All right, so now you take him at the end.
Yes. Okay, next on the list, William Penny on behalf of Daniel. Or?
Or, yes.
For variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 2 of Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a front yard setback and a special permit under section 8 dot 1 dot 1 dot C to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure to rebuild a 20 by 22 garage and add a second level as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 9 Venus Circle, assessors map 108, lot 25, zoned residential, and this was also continued from 10/27/22. The voting members are Mike, Joe, and myself. Name and address for the board, please.
My name is William Penny, and I live at 333 Great River Road in Somerville. I'm the designer and builder for this project. This is the owner.
I'm Daniel Look, at 9 Venus Circle.
Okay, great, can you talk about what you're trying to do, please?
So the plan of this, this is, there's an existing garage that was non-conforming, that was built by some previous owner, very poorly built and falling apart, and from a safety standpoint, needs to be reconstructed. So the idea was to reconstruct a garage in the same footprint that they have currently, not making it, actually, in one section, we make it a little bit smaller, but keep basically the same footprint as the existing garage and add a, another bedroom up top. And in designing it, I tried to keep the, the additional second floor by using some dormans, keeping it low, so it matches the ranch house that sits next to it. So that's in your file. So, I'm sorry, this, so this is actually a corner lot that's shown on this, this locust plan that's Venus Circle, and it just says proposed wave.
What's the name of that street, that? Serenity, Serenity Road.
Serenity, yeah, so the, the setback with the existing foundation is 15.7 feet, closest point, I think it's wider, it's, goes towards the back, towards the, sort of the.
Circle? Yeah, Serenity Road or something, I figured what that is.
Drive?
Drive.
Drive. And then in addition to that, we're putting an addition on the back for a family room, but that doesn't make, that meets all the setbacks for the project. Well, I don't know, maybe we just want to buy that house, but I have a, I have a photograph, but it doesn't show the garage, unfortunately, with me today. So basically, what we're looking for is a special permit to build on the same foundation and a variance for the 15.7, but that should be 25. The other advantage for doing this is that the, the curb cut, the driveway, doesn't have to change, because it's going back to the same location. And that, unless the board has any questions, that I'm not sure what we're proposing.
You're not really adding any, you're just keeping the same footprint, nothing's changing.
I designed it so it fits the same footprint.
So it's, nothing's changing there.
Non-conforming garage.
A garage currently exists?
Yes.
Currently, there's a lot of a garage, and there's also a screen porch that's built on the back of the garage. And all of those have come down.
And there's an enclosed carport next to the garage, it's still the same structure, it's just kind of divided to be carport or closed carporting garage.
It shows on this drawing here that it looks like there's a little piece that's going to be removed?
Correct.
So, is that what you said at the beginning where it's going to shrink a little bit?
I didn't really need that piece in the garage, so it was kind of weird, so I just took that out.
Okay.
And the addition on the back actually goes over where the screen porch currently is. So that's, and that's very poorly built as well. I mean, this, the previous owner or whatever had great ideas, but not really good construction knowledge.
That screen porch is being turned into a bedroom?
No, it's being completely removed, but it's in the footprint, it's inside the.
Okay.
Where you see proposed addition?
Yes.
On the, on the site plan.
It's all part of that garage.
You can see like a line that goes through the O and the T.
Yep.
That, plus the face and the nine-and-a-half foot, that's currently right now is a very poorly built, some screen porch, I should say. So the plans that you had, I, I kind of outlined in yellow what was existing.
Right.
When I made my eight copies.
Mike, is there? The only question?
I have no questions right now.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, being an open hearing, is there anybody here who'd like to speak on this? Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
All right, I'll move, make a motion to both, both parts of the hearing, yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to approve? Joe, Mike?
Make a motion to approve a special permit under section 8, room dot 1, C, to alter previous existing non-conforming structure to rebuild a 20 by 22 garage and add a second level as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property.
That's for the special permit, correct?
Yeah. So now I make a motion to accept section of the variance under section 5.
We got to approve the first one first, the special permit first.
Second, room and special permit. Approve.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It's me, Mike and Joe on this one.
Yep.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, next one?
I make a motion to approve variance under section 5, 3, 2 of Tewksbury zoning bylaws for the front yard setback and a special, no, for the front yard setback.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next was a new hearing for James and Cheryl Tarpey for a, did I say that correctly?
Yep.
For a variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 2 of Tewksbury zoning bylaw for rear yard setbacks in lot coverage and special permit under section 8 dot 1 dot 1, C, to alter a previously existing non-conforming structure to construct a 39 by 32 dot 5 addition as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 60 Bay Street Ave, assessors map 83, lot 156, zoned residential, and the voting members are Rob, Dan and Joe. Name and address for the board, please.
Jim Toppe, 60 Bay State Ave, Tewksbury.
Paul O'Keefe, 250 Mitchell G Drive, Tewksbury.
Okay, can you talk about what you're trying to do, please?
He could talk, he's a builder.
Jimmy's trying to put on some extended living, get his bedroom onto the first floor, and make room for his kids, the, one of his sons maybe to move in and care for him as he goes on in years, in the process of having this done. He bought this house in 89, we found out the rear deck was non-conforming, and the commissioner said it would be a good bet to try to take care of both, both issues when we came before you guys.
So you're not doing anything to the deck, it's just there?
Yeah, we're not touching the deck, it's on the existing house. Yeah, we're not touching the deck, it's on the existing house. The shed that you see in the plot plan will be removed prior to construction.
What's this addition for?
Extend the living area. Jim and Cheryl are going to move it wherever things on their first floor, their bedroom.
That whole addition is going to be a bedroom?
Bedroom, kitchen, bathroom. Do you guys have plans, or they don't? I forget.
Look at the first page.
What's that? So, it's a kitchen, small office, washroom, and a bedroom with a gal, and then a half-bath.
You said the shed's gone?
The shed is gone, yes.
Yeah, the shed's gone.
The existing drive that goes front to back?
What's that?
The existing driveway, shows it on both sides of the house. It goes from the front of the house to the, the front of the yard to the back of the yard?
Just on the right side of the house right now, but they'll be gone. It does go front to back, the existing driveway right now.
It does?
Where that house is, it's all driveway.
How big is the house that's there now? In your existing house, how big is that?
Square feet-wise?
Oh, length by width? Give or take.
Um...
24 by 40?
42 by 24, I think.
And you want to build a 39 by 32? You don't have any renderings of what you want to build, uh?
What's that?
Computer-generated pictures of what you want to build?
No, I just, I had asked if they needed the plans, and I couldn't remember if they made me print them or not. Would you like to see this set of prints?
Um, yeah, it would, it would be helpful. So, are you redoing the front of the house as well, the existing house?
Redoing, what do you?
Making it, making it match the new section?
Siding, yes.
Because I got proposed front elevation on the first page. The proposed, that's the existing house, right? And this is your addition.
Nothing's really been touched on the new house, except we're re-siding it and possibly re-roofing it.
Yep.
So, it currently has, it's this.
Yep.
Okay, and that's the addition. Like a nimble.
It's definitely like a nimble. There'll be one door.
Is there another slider in the back? Looks like there is. And stairs going down? Mm-hmm. Joe, do you want to look at these?
Yep.
Those on the ground.
Yep. So, I took these to the commissioner before I first started this journey, and I was going to, I talked to him about an in-law suite. He says he doesn't see this as an in-law suite, he sees it as extended living space. So, that was his determination, not mine.
In-law, you'd have to lose, you'd have to lose one of the doors, wouldn't you? Because the in-law, you have to come through the existing house?
Yeah, but you could put the door on the side. I do a lot of these in town where I have that entranceway.
Yep.
And you come up, and the door is in the front, the entrance is, the door's to the right, so it doesn't face the street.
What's, um, what's over on 7th Street, though?
What's that?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking anyone who wants to answer it. What's on 7th Street? Is it regular street? Is it?
Street.
A paper street? We've been running into a lot of paper streets lately.
No, it's a street.
It's a regular street.
Does it just go from like your ri, your yard to the street, or is there a fence there, or is there any?
I have a fence along my property.
Off of that street?
Yeah.
This one I was looking for.
This neighborhood has relatively small lots. This is one of the biggest lots in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Are you the last lot here? Is that you here? Right there?
It's based, yeah.
Based, yeah, which way were we? I just...
I'm right on the corner of 7th and...
We're right here. Base Street, 7th, yeah.
This is his lot here?
Yes.
So, when it shows the driveway going all the way through, that's just starting?
Going all the way through.
Because they have existing driveway and used to driveway, so it looks like it's passing.
Oh, this is, right now, existing, this is tied, all, that's all, all the way back.
Is this the street here, or is the house back here?
No, that's, there's a, house is back there.
The house is there, okay. So, it just stops there, the driveway?
It stops there, but that's all going to come up in the construction.
I've got other questions?
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'd like to come to neighbors.
Okay, this being a public hearing, I'd like to open this up to the public. Okay, somebody want to make a motion to close both parts of the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close both parts of the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Would you like to make a motion to approve?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit from the Tuck's Berry zoning bylaws, section 8.1.1(c). Non-conforming structures. Said property is located at...
60 Bay Street Ave.
60 Bay State Avenue, assessors map 83, Lot 156, Zoned Residential. And that'd be for the existing non-conforming deck that we didn't even talk about. That there aren't going to be any changes to it, just never got permitted at the beginning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next one? Variance? This one?
I'm just, I'm making notes to note, there's two of them. Let's do them separately. I make a motion to approve a variance from the Tuck's Berry zoning bylaws, section 5.3.2. Back to this one. For a front yard setback. Said property is located at 60 Bay, Bay State Avenue, assessors map 83, Lot 156, Zoned
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me amend that a little bit. I said front yard setbacks, I should have said rear yard setback.
Yep.
Little amendment.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one is the lot coverage. I'd like to make a motion to approve a variance under section 5.3.2 of the Tuck's Berry zoning bylaw for lot coverage. Said property is located at 60 Bay State Avenue, assessors map 83, Lot 156, Zoned Residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
You too.
Lots, thank you. Okay, we're going back to David Funkett on behalf of Claudio Carrera for the 20 South Rota Street hearing. This is Rob, Dan, and Mike.
Thank you, Madam Sharon, the board, for that courtesy. And we just had a little conference, and we're hoping that the proposal that we have would address some of the concerns of the board. So, Claudio was in the construction building, he had a tape recorder with him, so that's always the important thing, to see something in real life. And what we're proposing is that we're, that we shrink the... To shrink the distance between the proposed pool from nine feet to five feet.
Six.
Uh, to six feet. That'd be three, though.
Pool to the garage?
That would be five.
Maybe pool to the gazebo?
Yes, pool and gazebo, because we're picking up four feet there, correct?
No, we're picking up three, uh, was it four?
Yes. Because the four and two is the six, plus the nineteen, so...
Yes, correct, sorry.
Okay. So, the, the space between the gazebo and the proposed pool, rather than nine feet, shrink that to five feet. So, we's picking up four feet there. And then the distance between the, uh, between the pool and the garage from five feet to three feet. And with that, we'd be able to get the garage from nineteen feet to 25 feet.
Twenty-five feet on the outside left corner.
On, on the left-hand corner, correct, yes. From south, that would be 25 feet off of South Rota Street.
And you still have your driveway between the proposed garage and the existing house?
Correct, that's, that will remain, nothing will change with that.
What are you going to have in front of the garage? Is that going to be blacktop? Are you going to, are you going to park that? Or are you going to park on the driveway?
Park in the driveway, it's gravel.
Is it going to stay gravel in front of the garage?
Yep. Unless the city lets me widen the driveway, which I was told they can't.
No, you can't because you don't own it.
What do you mean, I don't?
You don't own, if you were to, if you were to drive straight into your garage from the street, if you would drive perfectly straight, you'd be driving over town property. You'd be driving over Edith Drive.
Well, that...
Yep, I see what you're saying.
That, that's Mr. Di Maria's property.
According to the town, it's not.
Yeah, I have the deed that they say they can't find from Foster to Yvonne Carmier, and Carmier to Mr. Di Maria's, so...
I'm an agent of the town, so I have to go with the town, trust me.
No, yeah, but that won't, because then if that happens, if I was to turn that into a driveway that's all more watered, that is going to, going onto the street. So, no, I plan on leaving it as is.
Okay.
When I did the sidewalk of your, the, the front of your house?
Yep.
On the curb, there's like a tar curb, and then it changes to a piece of concrete?
Yep.
That piece of concrete, is that the town's, is that Mr. Di Maria's property?
That is, uh, my property, but, um, so the town actually went by my house, because I didn't pull a permit to pour, to put that. And so, I talked, spoke with the engineer, and he said that one day, they'll end up coming by and continuing the curb all the way, so it can prevent all that gravel from running onto the road.
For that concrete piece that's in the curb, you put that there?
Yep.
Do you, do you remember what, what for?
To hold the gravel inside.
Oh, okay. And that, that property is your property, not Mr. Me, Mr. Di Maria's?
No, that one, yes.
I don't see how that's your property.
That's what they said.
Can you show me on here? When this curb comes over here, the curb doesn't end almost to the left side of your
Yeah.
That matches with this.
Yeah, which, and the concrete's up right around here. They said it wasn't when the guy was there, the engineer. That's why it stopped where it did.
And Mr. Sp, this concrete on my left?
So, the concrete's right here on this brim. Curve follows this corner here. My concern is that one here.
Man?
See this curve here?
That's on it.
So, yeah, if it comes out here, straight, and I'm pretty sure that that concrete's right there.
Close.
It's confusing.
All right, what's the question?
But the intent is just to have gravel in front of your garage. So, there, there is no intent to pave, it would be gravel.
So, my other question is when we decide to vote on variances, do we need to, we're going to need to like have several variances?
Correct.
Is that correct? One for the pool, one for the garage, one for the gazebo, one for the lot size usage?
There's many approvals on this one. No, actually, it's all one, one variance. There's no special on this one.
You have the front setback for the garage, right? The side setback for the garage?
Reading into this, there's no different other than...
The pool's not different, the gazebo's not different?
There's no special variances.
And that's why you don't have to do that, because it's not a special permit?
Mm-hmm. All in. Just one variance. Under different sections, but it's a, one variance.
I'd, I'd be curious what the neighbor has to say about this.
This being a public hearing, does anybody want to speak on this? Sir, would you like to go back up to the podium and speak on it, or are you comfortable?
I'm comfortable with the 25-foot setback, yes.
Anybody else? No? Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to close the, both parts of the hearing.
Second.
Also?
Yes. If there are any further questions, just, you know, the synopsis would be that with the change pushing both the pool and the garage back, so that the garage now be 25 feet... twenty-five feet off of South Rota Street. And we're condensing the gap between the pool and the gazebo to five feet and from the pool to the garage to three feet.
You have a motion on the floor to close both parts of the hearing?
To close both parts of the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Make sure we reference the changes.
The changes that were just brought up?
Nine feet between the pool and gazebo has been changed to six, to five feet, excuse me. And the five feet between the pool and the garage have been changed to three.
Do you want to make note of that? Do you want to make the motion?
I'm going to make the motion?
Yep.
All right. I make a motion to approve for a variance under section 5.3.2 and 5.3.1e3 of the Tucksbury zoning bylaws for front yard setback to construct a 24-by-18 detached garage and a 20-by-20 enclosed gazebo and install a 20-by-18 in-ground pool as shown on plans filed with this board. Plans have been amended to reference space between the gazebo and the pool will be changed from nine feet to five feet. Space between the pool and the garage will be changed from five feet to three feet. Space from South Rota Street to the front of the garage will now be twenty-five feet. Said property is located at 20 South Rota Street, assessors map 70, lot 174, zone residential.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, yes. You're approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, any old business?
We're still in session, gentlemen.
Any new businesses?
Gentlemen?
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.